I can hear you, I can see you, and I saw your dialogue just now with Mark.
Oh, that would be good. Johan, can you hear us? Yeah?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Johan. We are in the middle of this Global Commons Forum day. That last year, you were here with us. But this year, you were in the middle of climate negotiation in Bonn. So that, but we are very still thankful of your spending the very important time for us um to um to share your maybe announcement. Are you using your slide right? Because we are very much interested in that the new announcement at the Planetary Health Check 2025, that last year is the first year of the planetary health check and a kind of diagnosis of the health of the planet. And you decided to do this annual health check that then every year. And you just announced in New York that the 2025 version. And then we all knew that we have now exceeded that the seven out of nine planetary boundaries. And it really hits the international media headline. I don't necessarily know that if it hits Japan or not. But then let's uh let's hear from you. So Johan, you are on.
Thank you so much, Naoko. And it's a great honor to provide you the scientific update of the Planetary Health Check 2025. And I'll do that by sharing my screen here. Let's hope that this works. Um, I'll just see to it that I have the right. There we are. I hope you have the right screen there.
Yes, we do.
And um, yes. And what I want to do is to give you also the the scientific background. Why we are now taking the entire planet scientifically to the doctor for a full health check and a screening. The reason is obviously that the patient is sick and that we have major challenges and that we're facing risks, which is illustrated by this uh figure that came out in a paper recently published, where we draw the conclusion that we, for the first time as humanity, are at risk of destabilizing the entire Earth system. On the X-axis here, you have climate change. And on the Y-axis, biodiversity loss, which are two of the planetary boundaries. The green area is where we need to be in order to keep these systems of life support intact. We're following this great acceleration path, taking us rapidly into dangerous red terrain. Business as usual, as you see, will take us to the dark red zone, where we are very likely to cross tipping points. Meaning that the planet tips over from being dominated by dampening feedbacks that keeps all the fundamental natural capital systems intact to support the global economy. And then this means that our only chance is is a transformative turnaround, which is illustrated here. And the Agenda 21 is only a milestone on the way of that journey. The safe landing is actually only possible after a great turnaround. And this entire transformation cuts across all economic sectors, all scales, all countries, the entire global economy. And it needs to be guided by quantitative boundaries that sets the safe operating space so that we know what we have as checks and balances along the way. And that's where the Planetary Health Check comes along to provide a quantification of the safe operating space and also to assess how we are doing against those boundaries. Now, that fundamentally means measuring the resilience, the habitability and the stability of the entire planet. I just want to really, really emphasize this, that we have overwhelming evidence that that's the juncture we've reached to. There's no place anymore. You cannot claim to be really providing contributions to sustainable development by only looking at environmental impacts and environmental stewardship at the local level. Uh, the nation state is no longer enough when we are undermining the global atmospheric system, the global hydrological cycle, the global nitrogen cycle, the entire ocean system. And that is what we're facing. The key basis behind the planetary boundary science that forms the foundation of the Planetary Health Check is based on three pieces of evidence. One is what you see on the screen here, which is the reference point. That the Holocene, the last 12,000 years, which you see here in this um stable line, I mean, that's variability, but a variability within a very narrow range, which is the last 10,000 years of temperature, global mean surface temperature on planet Earth. The zero point here is the pre-industrial average temperature on planet Earth. It's 14, 14 degrees Celsius. And the planet has been hovering around this very um stable temperature since we left the last ice age, which you see further to the left here, minus five degrees. And you're in a deep ice age 18,000 years ago. We leave the last ice age and we enter this extraordinarily stable Holocene. And we go through the agricultural revolution, the industrial revolution, and the civilizational journey as we know it. Now we are heading towards three degrees Celsius within just three generations. This is a path to disaster. It's a place we haven't seen on planet Earth for the past five million years. And it's all driven by the great acceleration, which you see here to the furthest right, the exponential rise of pressures in the economy on natural resources. If you look carefully at this data, you find that the Holocene is a very narrow corridor of life. It is 14 degrees Celsius plus minus 0.5 degrees Celsius. It has a narrow range for the hydrological cycle. It has a narrow range for all the living nature. And that is the reference point that we use to quantify the planetary boundaries. This is fantastic, actually. Science has come so far that we can today say that the planet we depend on is the Holocene planet. So therefore, we can measure against the Holocene in order to define where we need to be for a safe landing. If you're interested in, isn't there a bit more wiggle room for human development? Well, the answer scientifically is no, there isn't. But if you want to know, over the past three million years, what you see to the furthest left here is the width of the corridor that the planet has remained in over the past three million years. And the important insight here is that we've never exceeded two degrees Celsius, as far as we know today, of global mean surface temperature warming. That's the warmest point. And the cold point, deep ice age, is minus five. And what you see within this broad corridor are the famous Milankovitch cycles of 100,000 years of ice age and 15 to 30,000 years of warm interglacials. So that's what we understand as our planet. It has had a journey throughout the entire quaternary of a plus-two to minus-five oscillation. And then it stabilizes into the final oscillation, which is a warm Holocene interglacial of 14 degrees Celsius. Basis number one for planetary boundaries. Basis number two is, of course, the great acceleration, the pressure points, that we've allowed to subsidize global economy by freely exploiting all the natural capital on planet Earth, causing this very, very successful exponential rise of human development and economic development, which you see to the left here, all the socioeconomic curves of GDP growth, uh longevity, uh resource use across the entire economy. The impacts are what you see to the right here. The green curves of impacts on carbon dioxide, deforestation, loss of biodiversity, overuse of fresh water. Any parameter that matters for human well-being in the environment looks the same. Up until mid-1950s, incremental change, and then off we go in the great acceleration. And that is what is evidence number two, why we now need the planetary boundaries. We are at the top of these curves. We've reached a point of saturation. We're hitting the ceiling of the capacity of the planet to cope with the human pressures. To put it simple, there's no more ocean for sustainable fish exploitation. There's no more atmosphere to safely dilute greenhouse gas pollution. There's no more ice sheets that can continue just melting without risking the stability of the ocean conveyor belt. There's no more biodiversity that we can just lose at some kind of abundance levels and not risk um collapse of ecosystems or pollination. It's the end of the road of unsustainable pressures. Evidence piece number two. And we see the the consequences of this. I mean, this is the temperature curves on planet Earth. We've just experienced 1.5 degrees Celsius of global mean surface temperature rise. We see a tendency of accelerated warming over the past 10 years. This really worries us. This is why we are urgently updating the planetary boundaries through Planetary Health Checks every year, because we're starting to see a planet that shows signs of losing resilience. So as I started this talk, it's about the stability, the resilience, and habitability of Earth. Well, the habitability is at risk. The resilience seems to be showing signs of cracks. And that's what you see here. I won't go into the details here. There's the whole scientific debate going on, why is this happening? But one factor is definitely um the question whether the resilience of the living biosphere is going down. Um, more and more scientific papers confirm, unfortunately, that we haven't bent the curves yet. This is a paper that has not been published yet. It will be coming in the next few weeks, the State of the Climate System in 2025. I won't go through the curves on the left-hand side. You can just believe me that they give the 2025 update on methane, nitrous oxide, carbon dioxide, energy imbalance, loss of biodiversity. They continue point, unfortunately, in the wrong direction. We haven't bent the curves yet. It's starting to cost. We have implications across the global economy. You've seen the insurance company's data. It shows over $2 billion, 200 billion US dollars in costs just for the 2024 impacts. This is just just a uh a kind of a smorgasbord of impact articles from climate-induced extremes in 2024. Droughts, floods, fires, heat waves. And the third piece of evidence is tipping points. Here you have the 16 climate tipping elements that have tipping point dynamics that contribute to regulate the climate system. They've now been very well mapped, six of them in the Arctic. You have the North Atlantic, the Amazon Rainforest, the Antarctic uh components, the tropical coral reef systems. They are across the entire planet. It's a long list. It's 16 of them, 1-6. They are mapped in the IPCC and the Government of Panel on Climate Change. And we use these in order to have further scientific evidence to quantify the planetary boundaries. So fundamentally, the planetary boundaries is about staying as close as possible to the Holocene, our reference point for the desired planet. What determines whether we can stay close to the Holocene are the tipping points. Meaning, the tipping point systems in a healthy planet remains in a state that cools the planet, that the ice sheets are stable, reflecting incoming heat from the sun, that the overturning system in the ocean helps to sink carbon and heat to the lower depths of the ocean, that ecosystems are so stable that they can continue sucking up carbon dioxide in keeping carbon stocks intact, that permafrost is stable and does not release methane. And here you have the latest assessment that we do in the Planetary Boundary Health Check Science to provide evidence, where should we put the safe boundaries? Here you have then the 16 tipping point systems. On the X-axis is global mean surface temperature. So this is the temperature at which these systems are at risk of tipping. The the broad uh columns here is the uncertainty range in science. So admittedly, there is still significant science needs to to narrow in this uncertainty range. But further to the right you go, the darker is the color, the higher is the confidence levels that we will tip. The dots here is the median assessments. So that's the median. Um, that's where science shows the systems are likely to cross their thresholds with a 50% likelihood. What you see here is the top six here are likely to cross the tipping points at 1.5 degrees Celsius. And here you have the Greenland ice sheet, the West Antarctic ice sheet, all the tropical coral reef systems. Look at the narrow uncertainty range on tropical coral reef systems. We are almost certain that this is the first system to crack if we exceed 1.5. Abrupt throwing up permafrost, collapse of the Labrador Sea current, collapse of the barren sea ice. This is what gives us very strong scientific evidence that staying below 1.5 degrees Celsius is the planetary boundary for climate, because we want to avoid crossing tipping points. So we put the boundary at a safe distance from from the scientific evidence of causing irreversible changes. I'll come back to the Amazon, which you see further down here. Uh, my pointer may be showing it fourth from the bottom, showing a very broad uncertainty range, as you see, from two to six degrees Celsius with an average of 3.5. And I'll question that through the planetary boundary science. The challenge is that this is the best science can offer today on the journey to the future. We are heading towards overshoot. So if I say that science shows clearly that the planetary boundary for climate is to stay below 1.5, unfortunately, we are heading within just the next five, 10 years to to breach that boundary. We're heading towards increasing, uh, breaching 1.5 and heading towards overshoot. And the blue line here are the IPCC assessments or scenarios where we can hold 1.5 with low overshoot. We conclude today at the Postlom Institute that these are no longer possible, that we've unfortunately loaded so much greenhouse gases, deteriorated so much resilience along the planetary boundaries, that that this is no longer a feasible pathway. The best we can offer is is the is the is the Mangenta lines you see here. Of course, there's a widespread, as you see, but the average line is reaching 1.7 uh degrees Celsius of global mean surface temperature rise over a period of almost 50 years before potentially coming back to a safe landing within the planetary boundary space. So the window is still open to hold 1.5, but we're in for a jumpy ride with more extreme events, more droughts, more floods, more life-threatening heat waves. And the question is, how can we come back? And the only way to come back is to come back into the safe operating space of planetary boundaries, because it's the planetary boundaries that determine the resilience and therefore the buffering capacity of the planetary system. That's why we need the planetary boundaries. And here you have them, nine Earth processes that scientifically are shown to be the systems, the systems, not like a list of systems. It's these systems that we today understand regulate the stability and the resilience and the life support on Earth. So you have climate change here, of course. But you also have, if you look to the left, the the nature boundaries, biodiversity, land system configuration of biomes, the large forest systems like temperate forests, bore forest, and tropical forest. Of course, the bloodstream of the whole planet, the freshwater cycle, the biochemical cycles of nitrogen phosphorus, and the ocean, which we use ocean acidification as as the indicator. And then you have three boundaries, which are very obvious, but more connected to to chemistry. One is the stratospheric ozone layer, which is the protective stratospheric layer that protects us towards dangerous UV radiation. Um, you have aerosols, air pollutants, which regulates the functioning of the monsoon systems. And you have novel entities, which is chemicals, everything from PFAS, microplastics, nuclear waste, to persistent organic pollutants. What you see here is the quantification of all the nine boundaries. And the green space is where we were 150 years ago. This is uh our world uh in 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 1750, before the Industrial Revolution. We have not exceeded any of the boundaries. This is where we are today. This is the 2025 Planetary Health Check result. We have exceeded seven of the nine planetary boundaries. The seventh on the block is oceans. It's just past the safe space. The ocean is showing its first signs of being under multiple pressures. Pressures from heat, 90% of heat from fossil fuel burning is in the ocean. 25% of carbon dioxide is in the ocean, causing the acidification that breaches the boundary. But oxygen levels are going down. Utrification is going up. Overfishing is causing massive damage on 70% of ocean systems. The the ocean is under multiple pressures, which simply we do not know how that adds up to the stability of the system. Look at the overloading of nitrogen phosphorus. We're consuming too much fresh water. We're still losing too much intact nature on land by expanding particularly agriculture. We are in a in a very dramatic point in terms of loss of biodiversity. And we are in a climate crisis. And we have a major, major unknown risk, actually, of loading the Earth system with chemicals from PFAS, pesticides, antibiotics, all forms of of microplastics. So there we are. We have a crisis on our watch. And it's a very concerning one, that we're in the midst of a climate crisis, are risking the stability of the planet by exceeding all the boundaries that determines the resilience of the system. Here is just the story of the Amazon, because this is just to add to the understanding of the importance of the Planetary Health Check. Here you see the deforestation of the Amazon basin. This is the red parts are all the forests we've lost up until today. 17% of the planet Earth's richest biome on land, richest in all respects, over 100 gigatons of carbon. It has the richest biodiversity. It's the largest terrestrial biome on terrestrial, on land, on planet Earth. Climate-wise, as I told you, uh, the risk of tipping this system is very, is not, is not high. We put that at a three to five degrees Celsius of global mean surface temperature rise. But if you add ecological science on the biodiversity boundary and if you add hydrology in terms of the changes in in rainfall generation from convective rainfall, you land in a very different assessment. Then the basin is very likely sensitive to a tipping point or likely to cross tipping point already between 1 and 2 degrees Celsius if we lose more than 20 to 25% of the canopy cover, the richness and biodiversity in the system. This is quite logical when you think of it, that if you if you destroy the unique feature of the humid rainforest, which through its diversity leads to a remarkable water pump that generates 40% of its own rainfall. If you if you open up this system plus add temperature, you dry out the system much faster and it risks tipping over into becoming a bush savanna. That's the tipping point. And that would lose carbon, would destroy hydrology and fresh water supply to cities like San Paolo and countries like Argentina and have major impacts on the climate system globally. That's why the Planetary Health Check is so important. We lost it in September at the New York Climate Week. You see the front page here. Naoko Ishii is one of the Planet Guardians' spokespersons for this health check. We use a blood sample, test analogy, to to really hammer home the point that here we have a planet. We've mapped the nine organs of the planet, the planetary boundaries. We bring the planet to the doctor for a scan across the control variables. The green is where you need to be or want to be. The yellow part is the uncertainty range in science. I call this the danger zone between the two lines here, which is the range of uncertainty in science. And go into the red and we have high risk of causing irreversible changes, shutdown of organs in the body of the planet. Here is where we are today. You see the two that are still on the safe space, stratospheric ozone layer and air pollutants. These are, by the way, success stories. The ozone layer has been protected through the Montreal Protocol. We have been able to be planetary stewards one time in the 1980s. An atmospheric aerosol loading is going down. We have bent the curve. Cities are getting cleaner. Um, ocean-going commercial ships are getting cleaner. The atmosphere is getting cleaner. So so that is um is a positive. But look at the others. They're actually outside and they're moving in the wrong direction. If you add all this up, we land at the conclusion that the planet is outside of the safe space. We have a danger point right as we speak. This is a deep, deep concern. The second conclusion is that we're still in the danger zone. We're not in the high-risk red zone, which means that the window is still open to turn things around, as I started this this talk up. It needs a massive great turnaround, but it's not too late to do it. It needs speed and and great, great courage. It needs the governance of the Global Commons. Uh, we've defined actually the biomes, the tipping point systems, as planetary commons. We think today that the Global Commons, the high seas and outer space and Antarctica and 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 the high seas need to be complemented by the tipping point systems. We all depend on them. If you live in Tokyo or in in Berlin, you depend on the stability of the ice sheets, of the Amazon Rainforest, of the AMOC, of the uh North Atlantic overturning of heat. These need to be incorporated as commons. And that's why the discussions in this session is so important. Back to you, Naoko. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you so much, Johan. Um, the the audience is really, really um impressed or overwhelmed. Uh, do you have a minute or so to do some Q and A? Or your time is up?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, maybe I myself do have one question. I also want to ask that if the audience has another. Uh, my question is that um here today at this forum, because we have so much of a focus on nature or natural capital, the discussion is more like a local commons. So that the so one of the questions is, when we think about nature as a local commons, it's so local context-specific. How can we link up those local commons, the integrity of the ecosystem, that local thing, to adapt to the the global commons, a global environmental commons? So how you see in your model that how local is adding up to or impacting to the global planetary system? How do you make that kind of linkage? Because sometimes we lost in the conversation that then when we put in the value of the natural capital, it's very much about the local context. But I assume that your model, your thinking is also the covering that this local um uh capital, local commons, too, also to have an impact on the global system. So how do you explain to that linkage of local to global?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Naoko. I'm I'm so grateful for that question because it's so central. And it's really important to give me a chance also to emphasize how incredibly important the the management and 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 governance of the local commons is. I mean, it all starts at the local level. And what this emphasis on the planet means is that things have to add up from the local level all the way to the global level today. So fundamentally, it's it's about, you know, acting locally, but but not only thinking globally, but actually um measuring against the global level and and have that as as an accounting system. Now, I did not show any of the maps that we have in the Planetary Health Check report. But that's one of the things that really excites me today, that all the global boundaries, everything that I presented here, is now possible to translate into high-resolution global maps that literally goes down to the local pixel level. I mean, the local acre or or hectare or even square meter level and sometimes, thanks to all the Earth observation data and and validation we have to to local ground truthing, which means that for nitrogen, for example, we we can show that, yes, there's a global planetary boundary, a limit of how much the planet can can cope with in terms of overloading of reactive nitrogen. But we can also show that it's it's Europe, it's the North America, it is China, India, um Australia, that are overusing nitrogen, while particularly African farmers, but also parts in Southeast Asia. Uh, I'm not entirely sure about Japan, actually, that are either within the safe space or or underutilizing nitrogen. And we can do that for all the boundaries, give give very, very um high-resolution connections of how the global boundaries go down all the way to give kind of traffic light assessments down to the local level. It can help a local manager to say, okay, how are we doing if you have a biodiversity, fresh water, nitrogen, phosphorus, land, and carbon assessment against the planetary boundaries? So that that's the second thing which I think is is really exciting. But the third part, which I know is very challenging, but but we have come to that point that, you know, any really, let's say, state-of-the-art or or or, you know, let's call it a 2025 up-to-date version of local sustainable um action must also uh truly think through how does it connect to to the other systems of of similar type across the planet? It's it's no longer possible to to do neither um marine coastal zone management or local wetland or local wetland um restoration without thinking about how are the other wetlands doing? How how are the other tropical coral reef systems doing? How? Because everything is so interconnected and everything is in such a such a saturated or or let's say so close to 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 how much it can cope with, that that I think we need to think of of these uh natural capital systems in a systematic way. And I know that this is very challenging. It's not easy, but it would would help us to to move this whole, you know, to to transition faster if we have better connectivity between the local system that we are aiming to to manage.
Yeah, thank you so much, Johan, because you you gave me the really a great answer because sometimes we are stuck in the thinking that the natural capital is so local context specific and not really thinking about the global impact, but you gave us a quite an energy and the reason why we need to think not only local action but also to the global, that the commons. Thank you. Any burning question from the audience? I know Johan may not have enough time. Somebody could just enough to jump in. Okay, in this case, and again, that we would like to thank you so much out of your time for out of the negotiation. And I hope that in the next year you do come back again. Thank you so much.